Oh my God.
Did everyone please rise and pledge the flag?
The flag of the United States of America. The people of the United States of America.
Teach us the right way to serve the people we represent. Teach us to be good listeners. Teach us to be fair and understandable. Give us wisdom to make the right decisions. A man stands tall when he can admit two mistakes and has the courage to correct them.
We are going to add something new to the meeting. The school district, through the DARE graduations, has let me know that when we have a meeting in a public place, that the first order of business is to let everybody know where the evacuation routes are. So if we have an emergency here, we have two doors on either sides, two doors in the back, and stairway in the front, and stairway in the back of the building if so needed. Hopefully, they won't be. Clerk call roll.
Mayor Stafford?
Here.
Alderman Lincoln?
Here.
Alderman Sahaski?
Here.
Alderman Weston?
Here.
Alderman Sherman?
Here.
Alderman Thompson?
Here.
Alderman Woodward?
Here.
All present, your honor.
Thank you. First item.
It is resolved that the common council minutes of May 4th, 1999 are hereby approved.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Whereas by order of the Supreme Court dated March 31st, 1999, the Article 78 lawsuit brought against the city by Barbara L. Panko was dismissed on the merits. Whereas said lawsuit was an attack on the procedures the city went through to deny Ms. Panko her requested use of the city's right of way, but did not address the monies that she spent moving the sidewalk. Whereas the city attorney has advised that a lawsuit for the recovery of said monies is still a possibility and could be successful. Whereas Ms. Panko has made a request of her attorney for reimbursement of said monies. Now therefore be it resolved that the city chamberlain is directed to pay Ms. Panko $2,754 will be from the judgment and claims account, which is A1930, but upon verification from the city attorney that he has received a duly executed release from liability. Or the other option is therefore be it resolved that the request of Ms. Panko is hereby denied.
Discussion.
Everybody looks at me.
Your ward.
I'm your ward.
I'll give you my opinion. We beat her in court. We made her an offer to reimburse her for expense in exchange for dropping her Article 78. Is that...
Technically, it was before the Article 78, but yes, we were awaiting that information when they filed the Article 78 instead responding.
Yes. And after they saw that they were probably going to lose is when they came back and said, "Hey, is that offer still out there?" Is that pretty close or not quite?
It was after it was a... It was after it was clear, it was after they'd already lost. But there was discussion, in fact, honestly, the judge was involved in that discussion about the fact that that did not necessarily take care of the underlying possibility of a civil suit against the city for the monies that they expended on a sort of a detrimental reliance theory, which could pass, could be successful, I would think.
Put odds on it?
You can't put odds on it. Eighty percent. No, I'm not going to put odds on it. You just can't do that. But I think there's a good chance, a fairly good chance.
Harley, did we tell her she could move that sidewalk?
If she did certain things. We told her she could move the sidewalk if she talked to her neighbors. She did not talk to her neighbors. Therefore, she could not move the sidewalk, basically. And she did it anyway. And the judgment that you received says that she did not follow the proper procedure. If she had exercised any due diligence, she would have seen that she should have gone to the planning commission and that there were procedures to be followed. She chose not to do that. And in my opinion, did this at her own expense, at her own risk.
Is the sidewalk that she's got now on the city right of way?
Yes. And the city paid to put it back. I think we should not just not pay her, but also send her a bill to replace the sidewalk she dug up. It may not be very popular, but that's how I feel. And if you want to...
Is there any other discussion?
Well, you know, would it not be in good faith to reimburse them for the cost that they went through for digging up the sidewalk?
I would like...
Because it was, you know, it was a very... There was a number of different things that were going on there, and I'm not sure if the communication was what it should be.
Yeah, I'd like to address that, Bob. I think from day one, when this, when we realized we had a problem here, I thought from a legal point of view, we were in trouble, to be honest with you. And it turned out through the case law that exists that we weren't, that, you know, we were actually okay because the case law says you cannot give somebody permission to do something that legally they can't do. But I think that you, I would think that, and this is maybe overstepping my bounds as legal advice, but I would think that good faith has to be a consideration you guys have to look at. I mean, even if legally they can't, they couldn't be successful, she was given permission to do it by this administration. I think that that has to be at least a consideration.
Well, the way I feel about it, her husband, I think it's her husband, asked all the aldermen to come up there and talk about that with him. And when I talked to him, he admitted to me that he did not talk to the neighbors, even though he told the aldermen he was going to. And that was the one thing that bothered me because I think there's not an alderman here that probably the biggest issues we ever get into is neighborhood issues. I don't know. I know it's a sticky thing, but if the alderman feels that he's got to know, he's close to it, he's got to know what happened there. If he feels that we shouldn't do it, I'm not, I'll support him. I feel bad doing it, but I still think in my mind that if all those neighbors were asked, it may have come out differently.
I believe that, too.
You know, I work with one of them, and he told me that. He said, "You know, if the guy come down here and talk to me, tell me that they're going to..."
He would have explained it to begin with.
Right.
There probably would be a parking lot.
Right.
I mean, it got to be more of a principle thing than anything else.
He did tell me, he did not talk to him. He said, "I talked to the one next door, then I found out later that it was not actually the owner, it was a tenant." And I said, "Well, you know, you really, really ought to do that. If you tell someone you're going to do something, you ought to do it." So...
I would like to make an opinion on this. I will go on the advisement of our city attorney. And I feel that possibly there's a lot of miscommunication that was into this matter. And since our attorney is advising us this is the direction we should take, that's the direction I would, I will take.
I don't like, but haven't, I don't think you have much of policy.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
I guess I will. I'll go with B, denied.
What's the motion?
To reimburse, I think.
No, the motion is to resolve that...
My, I've read it with choices.
Yeah, there's A, that we pay her, B, that she's denied. And I'll offer the motion that her request is hereby denied.
I'll second that.
You seconded?
Ron. I did. I'd ask for a roll call vote, Joe.
Okay. Alderman Lincoln?
Yeah. I vote to deny her being paid.
Alderman Sahaski?
I vote on, looking at the advice of our attorney, to pay her.
Alderman Weston?
To pay her.
Pardon me?
To pay her.
Alderman Sherman?
Denied.
Alderman Thompson?
Denied.
Alderman Woodward?
Denied.
I've ordered to deny.
Uh, the motion to deny would be carried.
Motion to deny is carried.
Four to two, your honor.
Thank you. Next item.
It is hereby resolved that the city attorney is authorized to settle the pending Article 7 tax surcrary lawsuit with Dean Foods Vegetable Company by settling the combined assessments for 1999, $2,000, and $2,001, seven million, six hundred thousand dollars, with any refund due from the city to be paid back to Dean's Foods equally over the next three years.
I'll offer it.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Your honor, how much is that refund for the next year?
Forty thousand.
We're not going to pay the cash out, right? There's going to be a reduction in receipts over a few years?
Reduction in the tax over the next three years.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
It is resolved that the city clerk's report for the month of April, 1999, in the amount of $6,123.51 is hereby received, approved, and placed on file.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
It is resolved that Mike and Laura Lee Dempsey, owners of 616 East Broadway, Otto Ball, owner of 310 South 7th Street, requested that the sidewalk on the west side of South 7th Street from East Broadway, south approximately 145 feet, be removed to allow for parking of motor vehicles on the city right of way. It is further resolved that pursuant to Article 11, Section 177-54(c), Fulton City Code, the above requests is hereby referred to the planning commission for their review and recommendation.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
It is resolved that the city of Fulton Civil Service Commission at a special meeting held on May 12th, 1999, appointed Barbara Wiman to the position of Personnel, Civil Service Administrator of the city of Fulton effective May 17th, 1999. It is further resolved that the mayor be authorized to sign the annex agreement with Barbara Wiman that provides informational reference concerning rules, benefits, and other provisions and conditions of employment for the remainder of 1999.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
It is resolved that the daily marina fees are hereby increased from 75 cents per foot to $1 per foot effective immediately.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Why?
Barry, wait, I think, did you have a question?
Yeah, why? I'm just out of...
I think Barry's here, he can speak to it.
Hey, he had a letter and that, too. A memorandum.
Oswego charges a buck, so we should do? Is that the thought here?
Being that it was implemented in 1994, we've done some extensive approvals to have marinas. And I think it's well warranted that we, the city should be rewarded for the work that was done. And it's certainly a fair charge. Take any other marinas, the amenities that we have, proximity to local businesses and eateries, I think that's more than fair.
Okay.
Do you have a motion?
I'm going to stop.
Do you have a motion?
Actually, Barry, I'm glad you're looking at that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
It is resolved that the police department be authorized to purchase four portable kennels with top, including a cage bottom with removal tray at a cost of $430.
Excuse me. Excuse me, yes. But it's not four portable kennels, it's a four-foot portable kennel.
Four foot.
Yeah, I thought it was four of them, too. I didn't deal.
Portable kennel with top, including a cage bottom with removal tray at a cost of $430. Said cost to be a transfer from the A1990 contingent account.
I was going to order one.
I'll move it.
What's that, Mike?
Did you want to speak on this? You were the one who requested it.
Yeah, the reason we're doing this is a couple of Sunday mornings in a row, there was a friendly rottweiler that happened to be walking down Utica Street that ran into two other ones that lived on the corner of Sixth and Utica. And came to find out that if we had caught the dog the second time on a Sunday afternoon, the pound is closed, we don't have any place to put them. We can't keep them, our cage isn't big enough. I didn't think that we should be in a spot where we couldn't do something with the dog if we had to get it. So I told Mark to go out and buy it. I'll offer that.
This will just be for dogs?
Yes.
We're going to find a four-foot coon. Large cats and small ponies. Exactly. For flexible. It's portable.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I'd like to make a comment on this. I think we might have a problem in this city with pit bulls. There was a dog, my wife was over at the Seaview Park, and there was a dog that had a hole in one of those swings, was trying to rip it apart like a shark tearing apart a fish. And the owner, I don't, there's kids running around there, and I think we might, there's other cities that have ordinance against pit bulls, and I think we're going to look into it here because I, it's a dangerous dog in a close community.
Would you like to refer that to the legislative committee?
Legislative, yeah. Sure.
Second.
Okay.
I'll second.
We have a motion to refer pending legislation concerning pit bulls to the legislative committee.
I'd like to ask a question. We already have a leash law. Is this particular to just pit bulls?
Yeah, I want to look at other law, other community laws, like maybe Syracuse has law, and there's some communities outright ban them inside the community.
We looked at this in 86 and 87, and we almost did it. The council was a little reluctant at the time, and we had problems with them. They are bred differently than other dogs. They're bred to protect and sometimes be on the aggressive end. And there is no doubt in the drug world that they are used to deter people from invading the property of these people. They certainly aren't a house pet. They're not like a poodle. And, well, I can tell you this. At the time that this, at this, at the time that we looked at that law in 86 and 87, there was an individual that lived on Whittaker Road whose nephew had two or three of these. And TV9 was down there. And she had her granddaughter in this cage with these pit bulls, showing how, that's how they were. And one pit bull come out, and she was petting it. And she let her poodle loose by this pit bull, and the pit bull grabbed it and, for the record, killed it on TV. And she was trying to tell us how great these pit bulls were. And what the guy was doing was...
They're good with poodles.
I'm glad it didn't kill the poodle or the kid because the kid was like six months old. But it shows people what they're like and how unpredictable some of them can be. The problem is you get into so many crossbreeds. You know? That pit bull terrier was bred...
Walks like a duck.
Yeah.
I think if we send this to the legislative committee, they can try to get some model laws from other communities and see what we can do.
I will tell you right now, too, your honor, that down on Seneca Street in the 400 and 500 block, there's a gentleman in this city that owns a pit bull terrier who has attacked more than one domestic animal dogs in their own yards and ripped them up. And really, not a heck of lots happened.
Have they been reported?
Oh, yeah. The guy's been to court, and of course, he doesn't pay the fine. There's a certain amount of individuals in this city that really don't have to live up to their obligations, not just here, but everywhere. But, yeah, and it, one of them had to be my mother-in-law. And she paid a lot of money to get her animal, which was tied up under a leash law, and did, I don't know, $200, $300 worth of damage. He lived up the other block, got down there, ripped the dog up in her yard. Would have done it to one of the grandchildren if they happened to be there. And I got a $50 fine that was ordered to pay, which can't get blood from a stone. And then two weeks later, he went from Seneca Street to Erie Street and did the same thing to another dog. And the guy that owned that dog hit him with a pitchfork, stabbed him a few times, and he got, I think, arrested for doing that.
Pitchfork, that's my choice of weapon.
I really think that there should be some type of law on that. I wish you could have a law on the type of people that think they ought to own them. But I'm not sure you can.
I had one chase me out my driveway, and I was going to use my pitchfork on him. I was waiting for the bite in the backside, but he didn't catch me, so...
Well, we had all kinds of stuff on people that were killed by these animals, you know? Bites in legs and stuff like that.
I think we should look into it.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We have two items for discussion. First is the request from Operation Oswego County for a funding contract for 1999. Mr. Cruck, you talked with Mike Treadwell today. Would you care to make a presentation?
At our last meeting, you asked me to ask Mike Treadwell some questions about Operation Oswego County. Bob, would you take one of these? These are my notes. I talked to him today regarding his request. The first question was, where does Operation Oswego County presently get their funding? And presently, they get 75% from Oswego County and 25% from state contracts, local contracts, private sector contributions. So 75% of their monies comes from Oswego County. We wondered what they were going to be doing with the money if we granted it to them. His answer to me was to better provide services to the city of Fulton as follows. And these five items were in the letter that he sent that were in your packet. But the important thing was that the money is primarily used for advertising and marketing, the Fulton EDZ and trade shows, publications, and other areas. And I know he does a lot of this, and he thinks if we give him some money that he will increase this and expand on this. And lastly, we talked about the impact that Operation Oswego County has had on the city of Fulton and the immediate surrounding area. And in the last two to three years, he has secured funding for approximately $25 to $30 million. He cited a few examples, Sealrite, Sunoco, Black Lawson, training grants, and paving that he's done throughout the city.
John, does Operation Oswego County also provide, or are they the vehicle for the IDA funding for the municipality?
I think they work with the IDA. I don't know that they are the vehicle.
They're the ones that handle the IDA funding.
Well, the reason I ask that, and I think that it's great to have an agency that will go out and promote business, bring it here. And when I look at it, I consider this a county agency. Am I right or wrong?
Seventy-five percent.
Okay. So when there is a benefit reaped in the city of Fulton, it's also reaped at the county if it has to do with retail because the county now has a sales tax. And they also have property tax. And one thing that I'm keenly aware of when businesses are financed with IDA bonds, they usually go off the tax rolls, and there's a very small proportion paid in what they call pilot agreements or payment law taxes. That happened with the hotel, it happened with Meadowbrook Estates, it happened with Mill Apartments. And I believe it happened with the new mall that we annexed during the Bullard administration.
It did.
Okay. I am not objective to try to work with them on a budget, but I feel that there's a time and a place, and I think it is at budget time, and I think that's one we should consider. This is only my opinion. When IDA financing is provided in a municipality like the city, no one setting up here has any say over it. There's not one person on this council that has any say whether or not that is funding with, the IDA funding can come in. But once that happens, that locks them out of property taxes that are normally paid by any other business or any other homeowner or taxpayer. And that clearly puts a burden on other people. And in this city, we went through a lot of changes, not necessarily relevant to this administration, I understand that, but maybe me, because I bridge the two. And through revale, there's been some good things and some not-so-good things, depending on which end of the revale you are on. Myself, I would rather consider it at budget time. And if I was to consider appropriating monies, I would spend it in the neighborhoods at this point. That's just my feeling. I'm not saying it's bad, because I do think they do a good job. But I do see a benefit that the county also gets when they spur businesses, retail, or even something that supports property taxes. They get it just like we do. And they also get sales tax like we do. And, no, I think there's a time and place. That's just my feeling.
I'm not arguing for or against.
No, I know that, John, you're explaining it, I understand.
The only comment I would have is that with the Kmart mall in there that is under a pilot agreement, we are getting many, many-fold the number of dollars back from sales tax than we have taxes on...
Yeah, we are, John, but why don't you bring that up? We've also had the Chamber of Commerce approach the council, and I'm sure it's not dead because of the election here, of not paying sales tax on clothing items up to $500 that are whack. And I'll tell you right now, that's clearly going to fall right into homeowner. Because the biggest revenue we get to run this town is property taxes and sales tax. And if I had $1,000 to spend, I'd spend $500 one day and $500 the next if I know I didn't have to pay any sales tax. And no one likes taxes, but sales tax to me is probably the most fair way of paying taxes. Everyone pays it. We don't have 48% cut out of the loop because of all the different benefits, okay? And that mall you're talking about, you're 100% right, but we could knock, I don't know, I'm just guessing, 10, 15% of that out of here if this council decides that the chamber is right and the year is right to knock that sales tax off on clothing. I've yet to get the figures. I've yet to get the figures. I asked, I've been trying to get the figures on what that would actually cost, and so far I haven't heard it, but I've had several businesses call me on it in the sixth ward. So yeah, you're right, but no, I don't agree with you.
Any other discussion?
I think I would ask, I don't remember ever having to fund this before, right, Ron? And John, is this something, I mean, the ten thousand dollar...
Well, one thing we do, Bob, we did have a request not so long ago to fund this business blunder they had, this thing we just had in Oswego.
Yep.
And that's part of that.
Mike told me that the city has not funded this since the Drone administration.
Yeah. I'm not saying that it's a bad thing. I just would rather plan for it because I'm telling people, no, on neighborhood improvements, because we didn't budget it, and when I see something come up like this, I have a hard time with a clear conscience saying, well, how's this different?
Well, that's what I'm wondering. I'm wondering the timing. I'm wondering why is this being done now?
This was a request when we initially did our budget.
It was a request.
And we did not put it in the budget.
Oh, I see. Okay. No, but I mean, it hasn't been done since the Drone administration. I'm wondering why it wasn't ever gone through before.
I don't know if they asked other administrations or not.
I think what it is is, they look at all the good they've done and they feel that we should contribute, and I think that's a legitimate request. The only thing is, I think it's untimely.
And also, would they do more if, you know what I mean, if we're giving them ten thousand dollars, are they gonna, are they gonna try to do more for our city? Is that the way it works?
I think they do all they can do.
I think they do all they can.
I really do. I really do.
And do they request this from every municipality? I suppose so.
The city of Oswego has actually paid ten thousand dollars, from what Treadwell has told us.
I think he wants to expand his marketing base, more publications, getting the city of Fulton out there around the country, as this is our EDZ zone and this is what we can offer to attract people here.
See, originally, John, the ED zone was touted by the Community Development Agency at one time, when it first came in. I was here, my administration was the first one to apply for that, and we lost it to Oswego. But they were the ones that applied originally, and I don't know if we're still involved with it or if it spun off to...
Yes. We have an EDZ zone for Fulton.
Yeah. We lost the first round, anyway.
Any other discussion?
I do have one question. When they say market Fulton, do they also mean Valony?
What's that, John?
When they say market Fulton to potential industrial or commercial firms, do they also mean Valony, like Miller Brewery?
I think they mean the greater Fulton area, which I think is good, anyway.
And if they do, does Valony kick in any money towards us?
I don't know if the towns do. I know the city of Oswego does.
John?
Mayor, I have, it's not an item of discussion. It's basically, as everyone knows, Community Pride Week starts the 21st and carries on through the 31st of May. However, we got an early jump on it. This past weekend, we were able to do some work in two different parks, Recreation Park and East Side Park, Boris Park is its official name of it. We had approximately between thirty and forty volunteers over at Recreation Park doing some landscaping and doing some work on some of the playground equipment and beautifying that park. And we did the very same thing over at East Side Park, excavating around playground equipment, doing landscaping there, planting shrubbery, and beautifying that. And I also like to commend Alderman Thompson and our city attorney, Dave Hawthorne, for their instrumental work that they performed over there. It was grueling work. It's not easy.
My back is still sore.
The community really came together and we're, I have a whole slew of projects that are slated for the next several weeks, not just during Community Pride Week, but this is usually something that lasts right on into the tail end of June when groups can coordinate their time and their efforts to be able to give us a helping hand. It's extremely instrumental in beautifying city-owned properties and parklands. And I thank you people for giving us a hand and helping out and restoring our areas that are extremely used by our youth.
Thanks again. Thanks, Barry.
Thanks, Barry.
John?
Thanks, Barry.
On this, what was the business that went, what was the business that closed today in Fulton? Was it Profetti's Metal Works?
Sheet metal. Sheet metal.
The same one that Operation Oswego County is touting that they gave them financing to last year?
They didn't.
Yes. Okay. That's all I wanted to know.
Is there any other discussion on that, Operation Oswego County? The second item for discussion is the bed tax appropriation. It was requested last meeting that we find out if the Italian American Club was going to not have their Italian festival this year. I received a letter today. I'll read it this time. Due to the lack of cooperation, I regretfully was forced to cancel the scheduled date for the Italian festival this year. I am involved in too many activities at the club and did not have the time to once again chair this event. Since there were no offers to accept this responsibility, the only other alternative was to cancel. With that in mind, I feel it would be in the best interest of the community to redirect the funds previously set aside and allotted for our festival to the Veterans Memorial Day activities. Thank you, respectfully, Joseph R. Giannato Senior.
I would like to speak to this. I too contacted the chamber and asked them to contact the president of the Italian American Club to completely confirm that they were or were not having a festival, and of course, as you heard from the letter, they are not. I don't think it's, it's not their prerogative to designate where the money would go. The money was to be allocated to them in anticipation of them having a festival. I would like to speak, I know this has come up before and we handled it the last time. The bed tax monies was allocated for certain purposes. The Tourism Council was set up in 1992 to effectively allocate monies that were gathered from bed tax money to the different organizations that met the criteria of the council. The council had strict criteria, applications needed to be filled out and put in on time, and the council themselves take a great deal of pride in making good decisions based on what they think is the best investment with the monies. In 1997, the council realizing that there were three categories on the, that were getting funds from the bed tax money, which really didn't fit the criteria, so, and plus the fact that the council felt that these particular organizations or groups were certainly of need of city budgetary, and with that in mind, we allocated monies from the bed tax for the Chamber of Commerce, the Historical Society, and the Memorial Day Salute. Now, prior to 1997, 1998, the Italian, the Memorial Day Festival was allocated, it was three thousand dollars in 96, it was thirty-five hundred and ninety-seven, and 98, the council budgeted five thousand dollars, feeling that that would be more than adequate monies for them to operate with. So therefore, it took it out of the bed tax monies, allowed the Tourism Council to attract more, more organizations, different organizations, to use their monies for things like banners, brochures.
Consultants.
No, consultant, well, we talked about that before, too. As I said before on the consultant, they allocated five hundred dollars with the thought, one of our members thought that possibly they needed someone that might be able to suggest some different approaches to their, to their procedure.
Was anybody that applied for bed tax money denied?
Oh, yes.
Who?
Yeah, but see, the problem is, bed tax, the bed tax is a very flexible thing. Now, in 1995, bed tax money was seventeen thousand five hundred. In 96, it was fourteen thousand. 97, don't tell me, I don't know what happened, but it went to twenty-two thousand three hundred and seventy. And then 1998, it dropped back to fourteen four. Now, these are the monies that are spent in our hotels and is the bed tax money, so, no, so the council has to look at the different applications, and then wherever they have the money, they have to either cut or plus some of the different organizations. So therefore, by taking those three categories out of the process and making it part of a budget, it then allowed them to be more flexible and to use the monies for different categories.
Did the Memorial Day Salute get bed tax money last year?
Yes. Last year, they got it because they, they had filed an application, the monies were granted to them, there was a mix-up at the Chamber of Commerce, they didn't realize that the council had budgeted five thousand dollars for them. So that was approved when it shouldn't have been.
But I think the situation we're in right now is that it is apparent to me that fifteen hundred dollars was allocated toward the IAC festival. There will not be one. Therefore, there are fifteen hundred dollars worth of bed tax money available to be transferred to a different program, either on the list or something else. My suggestion, and I'll offer this as a resolution, is that we transfer the fifteen hundred available bed tax dollars to Memorial Day Salute Committee.
Okay, now, I would, as part of the discussion, say that I had polled the Tourism Council, and I feel very strongly that we have these commissions in place to act as our advisory committees, and their suggestion was that the money not be allocated to Memorial Day Salute. They have nothing against the Memorial Day Salute, it's just a matter of procedure.
Where would they send it? How would they allocate it? If you've asked them, what would you do? What's that?
That was a question that I was gonna ask.
If the Tourism Council has another idea.
What do they intend to use it for? If it's not gonna be used for Italian Fest, what do they intend to use it for?
Well, you could, they have two or three, they can either, number one, Mike Fallon from the director of the Chocolate Festival is considering a hot chocolate festival in the wintertime. That's a possibility. They, they would not, it's monies that's there, they're in the process that can be used for anything. But what they're saying is that they don't feel that it should be just allocated to an organization without, you know, it's not that the Memorial Day Salute, it could be any organization.
And his one suggestion is something that still possibly may not even happen this winter, right?
Or the money just sits there until the next year.
Or something else may come up.
Or something else comes up, it comes up. It gives them a flexibility. You know, what they're saying is that, would it not be the fifteen hundred dollars, the fact that it was not expended by the Italian Fest, would it not be then, could some of the other organizations then say, well, we would like to put a request in for the fifteen hundred dollars? So I think it sets a bad precedent if we take that kind of an action. And I know that the Memorial Day Salute needs the money desperately, probably. But I think it's a matter of principle. The Tourism Council is saying they would recommend that we didn't do that, and I would strongly support that.
Thank you. Alderman Thompson, you have made a motion.
Yes.
To transfer the fifteen hundred dollars to the, make it payable to the Memorial Day Salute.
Yes.
I'll second it.
Second. We have had discussion. Is there any more discussion on this?
Roll call vote.
Request for roll call vote.
Alderman Lincoln?
I have nothing against the Memorial Day Salute, but I'm gonna vote no.
Alderman Sahaski?
I will vote in favor.
Alderman Weston?
No.
Alderman Sherman?
Yes.
Alderman Thompson?
Yes.
Alderman Woodward?
I'm gonna vote yes, but I'd like to explain it here. Originally, when the bed tax came in, it happened, I think Joe Tieto remembers, when I was married, we're the ones that applied for it. One of the biggest problems that happened is we gave it up, the control of it, so the council doesn't look at it. We've got a number of people involved. I think that what Bob was saying about the Tourism Council makes a good point if someone backs out, but I'm looking at the whole general public and I've been involved in those parades, right, and I'm in C D activity of Fulton community, and it seems like there's an awful lot of the community out during that period. I will apologize for not knowing their entire budget or why they would be shorted this year. That concerns me. I, I, yeah, I think it's because of...
People like Niagara Mohawk, which used to give us twenty...
Right, industry, right.
... gave us zero. We got a letter, in fact, I've got it right here, and is this out of line for me to read this letter? I've got a letter from Nestle's that is kind of, it's kind of rubs me the wrong way. "We had sent out letters to different businesses in town asking for contributions like they do every year." The letter we got back from Nestle's to the Memorial Day Salute Committee was, is addressed to Tom Marbido, who is the treasurer of the committee. "Dear Mr. Marbido, on behalf of Nestle Chocolate and Confections, I thank you for considering Nestle as a potential supporter of your annual luncheon. Unfortunately, we were not able to contribute to your efforts at this time. As you may imagine, Nestle receives thousands of requests each year from schools, community groups, nonprofit organizations from across the country. Obviously, the need is great. Nestle is focusing on giving its efforts on a single mission, to make a positive impact in the world of quality education. Nestle Chocolate and Confections exclusively supports Nestle USA's philanthropic vision. All giving is allocated to three primary partnership programs, RIF, the United Negro College Fund, and Nestle's very own Adopt a School effort. Through these programs and partnerships, Nestle Chocolate and Confections is reaching out to help improve education in America. Efforts centered around RIF's reading programs, UNCF's scholarship offerings, and directly through our employees via Nestle Adopt a School initiative. These partnerships are national in scope and long-term. Little remains to support local auctions, fundraisers, community events, and more. We greatly appreciate your consideration and wish you much success in your endeavors." So they're saying that they don't give locally, but I think I just got something in the mail saying that they're like a second-tier sponsor of the triathlon that's coming this fall. They used to give us money. Niagara Mohawk used to give us money. A lot of people used to give Memorial Day money, and they don't.
Yeah.
Usually, we figure, start with about fifteen thousand dollars, can usually work with eleven or twelve, and this year, we're at about sixty-five hundred. Because people don't contribute.
Can I ask a question, Harley?
Companies don't contribute like they used to.
When does your committee start requesting money from these local organizations?
That committee meets all year round.
Right, but I mean, do you start, like, in the fall, when they're making out their budgets for next year?
I was not on the committee this year, so I don't know when they did this past year.
The budgets are already made out.
I was not on the committee this year, so I don't know when they did this year. I know the year prior, we did it specifically in October and November to get people prior to their annual budgets.
Right.
We've had a motion. You were explaining your vote. You added some information to why. Explanation of your vote completed.
Well, I thought it was.
Well, okay. Motion is carried. That motion is carried. Four to two?
Four to two.
Okay.
Okay, for the record, I would just like to state that I am a tremendous supporter of the Memorial Day Salute, but I have a problem with the procedure of allocating bed tax monies to the Memorial Day Salute when we already budget that particular function in the city. And also, I am completely supportive of the advisory groups that the council has to advise them.
I agree with you, Bob.
So, that's the reason I voted against.
Thank you very much.
Now, in response to Alderman Thompson's letter from Nestle's, I myself am starting to get really concerned about, you know, I was thinking the other day, there's big companies that employ hundreds of people in a small community like Fulton, and are yet are very hesitant to support even the smallest of functions, where the smaller businesses, like Dowd's and Harris, they're confronted even more so, probably than the large companies. And I would think percentage-wise, these small companies realize that they are dependent upon the support of the city of Fulton people, and they are more than willing to give over and over and over again, whether it's gas station, whether it's brewers, whether it's any of these small companies in proportion to what a large company gives, there's no comparison. So I just don't understand why the large companies, you know, I'm a small business, I'm basically an independent operator, and I, but I realize the value of my customers so that at different times, if they have a golf tournament or something like that, I'm going to supply some product to them because I appreciate their business. But I don't understand why large companies feel that they can just send out a letter and saying, I'm sorry, but we don't, we wish to not participate.
What has happened, as far as I can see, with large companies, they are no longer allowing their branches, their local branches, they do not allocate money to them for donations. It's all done through corporate headquarters, and a lot of corporate headquarters don't know where Fulton, New York is and don't really care that much. Thank you. I want to let everybody know, though, that why Niagara Mohawk did not donate to Memorial Day Salute, I do not know. I can tell you that we have the support of not only Niagara Mohawk, but Sealrite and Orion Power to bring the New York State Waterway Wind Orchestra to our city the 26th, 27th, and 28th of May, and they will be providing a concert at no charge to the city residents on the 27th at eight o'clock in the evening. This orchestra is aboard a watercraft that will be moored down in the river and opens up to a concert stage and will provide, as I said, provide this concert to all that want to come to it at eight o'clock on the 27th.
Is it gonna be like in downtown, or any...
Right, as close as we can get it to downtown. It's a huge, it's a huge bar of watercraft. This is, this is something that... This is something that we got support from these three companies. Generous support to be able to bring this to the city to just improve the quality of life, at least for a short time.
Sounds like a good deal.
Is there any other items that the council would care to speak to?
You're right, I had a couple. Just, I'll try to be quick here. I know that John Crook and some of the council, myself, when I was able to be in there, I was in a water sort of meeting. I was running back and forth. Met with some of the developers in the city and realtors and I think some financial institutions about some of these properties that get abandoned in the city of Fulton. I have a place that has been in problems, and this is the fourth year I've been back on the council from my my time off. This place, I thought that could give it to David here, our attorney, maybe he hasn't had a chance to look at it. But this place should have been redeemed, there was a petition for foreclosure last year, 8/31/98. It's four years in the rear taxes, it's been abandoned. It's not secured. We are the sole outfit that's mowed the lawn for the last four years. There's still garbage there. And the house has been declared unfit twice in the last four years and and asked the owner to tear it down and of course, it falls under fears. But I would like the city attorney to look at this and consider that we foreclose on this and maybe we can get a developer to do something with it. Or maybe, and I understand budgets, we have no money to tear this down. But at least like to see it boarded up, the kids are going in there and partying, we're gonna have it on fire someday. And like I say, we've been mowing the lawn for four years. As of August 31st of last year, there was $4,513 owed in back taxes on it and it should have been foreclosed then. And I let it slip, I thought the guy was gonna do something with it. Now, he's changed hands again. David, I'll give you this, 617 Sewer Street, I don't think it hurts people to know.
Karen Townsley's.
Yeah, well, what's happened was the gentleman that owned it passed away. And he let his daughter live there and she passed away. So it's went to one of the sons and they have a home and they've just not done anything with it. It's the old homestead, I knew these people years ago. So, you know, I'd like to look into taking that and maybe in the next year or two, we can make some kind of arrangement, someone will be interested in rehabbing it or something like that. And the only other thing I've got is, and the mayor and I have talked about this and I haven't really got an update on it, but this year, we passed a law and we had quite a debate on it, I was on I always try to play the devil's advocate. Sometimes it doesn't get me in the right spot, but I think we always should look at both sides of an issue. We passed a nuisance abatement law. And what we were trying to do is clean up our neighborhoods and I've seen that happen since I come in in 1980, we've always tried to do that and we've always come up with ideas to try to do that and with some success and some not so successful. I have an area in my ward, the 400 block of Seneca Street. There's only a couple people that live on that street now and that block that own their homes and they've been there, they're long time holdouts, probably 50, 60 years. There's rental properties there. And one of my arguments were, when we passed this law, was that no matter what we did, if we did not have arrests, we would never have a law that worked. And Mike and I talked about it and I know Mike got some some coverage for me in the last couple of weekends, but what's been happening down there? And this elderly gentleman, he's approaching 81 years old, asked me to bring this up, he watches these meetings, he likes to know if he's got a voice and I think it's good that we publicize him. I went down there and I've been down there probably seven times in the last month. And there's an apartment down there that's got a what they call a boombox, probably as big as a small couch. That they drag out on the front porch and they turn it up as loud as it goes and then they head to the backyard for him to enjoy. And he really doesn't enjoy it. He lives about four houses away. And I went down and listened with him and tried to hear him out. His wife is long gone and he kind of liked the next couple of years where he could not have to listen to this. So I went up and talked to the people. Was not able to communicate with them because they speak a different language. At least they do when I'm there. There are certain sign languages that they know. That I know. But anyways, to make a long story short, now that summer's here, we're gonna have a lot more of these problems and unless if we're gonna make the laws work that sometimes I oppose and once you know, if I oppose a law and we pass it, I'll do everything I can to support it because that's what I should do. We need to make arrests. I know we make arrests in parking lots of some of the the alcohol establishments for open container. I observe people down in that area drinking beer on sidewalks, drinking beer in the streets. All their patients literally pounding the heck out of each other and no arrests are made. Now, we can't make any law work if we don't, you know. I, we're kind of, and I hesitate to be to be critical of the police because we've had an effort of community policing. And I understand that.
The Equality of Life Patrol has been assigned to
I know that, Your Honor, I know that, and the weekend we did it, it rained. You know, so, so it kind of, but it's still going on, I go down by there, 8, 9 o'clock and I go down there tonight and there'll be a a sizable boombox on that front porch and everybody will be out back partying with the other boomboxes. And what they're doing is they're trying to annoy this old guy and it's working. And I I don't want to target them specifically, this probably happened in other neighborhoods, but what I suggested to the mayor and he agreed, is if we could make an arrest or two, send the landlord's copy of the nuisance abatement law and said, you know, you got one strike and maybe they will care. Or ask them to come up and sit on the porches of these people that live there. And say, you know, how do you feel about this? I feel bad for the guy and I really don't know what else to do. Probably in a couple of years, we won't have to worry about it.
We will
But I think in the next couple of years, we'll try to help.
We will definitely try to increase the patrols in that area.
And that's not any criticism towards you, Your Honor, I know you had people down there, I've seen them there. But it rained that weekend and everybody took cover, you know, out in the barn out back. You could hear the boombox out there, I think they towed that one in, but
There was one day that John and I were down looking at the vacant building
Right.
in that area and we talked to that individual and he explained to us a lot of the things that were going on.
Yeah. It was quite frustrating, yeah, I talked to him, because the guy's dog come up and bit him. And, you know, the dog wasn't known enough to be registered or anything and you know, I was
We will increase the patrols or yes?
Thanks, Your Honor.
Is there any?
That's all.
Anybody else?
I got a couple of things. There was two items for discussion. Did we deal with Operation Swigow County?
We had a discussion on it.
We didn't we didn't arrive at any
We didn't, there's no resolution, there's no resolution in place at this time.
I just would like to thank Barry for the work that he's doing on the Pride and the Community and the parks. I think all of us are working extra hard to improve our parks. There's no question that there's a lot to do, but we're going one at a time and we're getting them done. Also, I certainly want to bring it to everybody's attention that this Friday is Canal Pride Day and the festivities start at 3:00 for the down by the lock and there's music and there's magicians and an excellent chance to go down for everybody to see the downtown area and enjoy themselves.
I'm not gonna let you speak any more because you keep hitting everything that I want to say.
You gotta tell me how to
I'm just gonna have to shut you out.
I'm not gonna say another word. Or as Robin said, I'm gonna make a long story short.
That's after the first 31 minutes.
One announcement I would like to make, just to let everybody know, remind everybody on the council, the next meeting on June 1st will be the Elks Youth Night. That they had, usually they do it in May and they're gonna do it the 1st of June this year. And they will provide us
Supper.
A supper that night before the meeting and then we will have youth from the government class to high school with us during that meeting, so. Just to remind everybody, hopefully you'll all be able to be present for that. Again, I second Alderman Weston's invitation, please, everyone come down to the rededication of our downtown in the Canal Plaza on Friday. Hopefully, by looking at the weather forecast, I checked it again at 6:00 tonight and they're talking a window of Friday being a nice day. Either side of it could be kind of empty, but Friday's supposed to be a nice day. Does anyone in the audience have anything to bring before council?
I just have one more thing, if I could be allowed.
Oh, no.
I just, I just wanted to certainly the press was here last night, the mayor was here last night. And this, this room was completely full and the standing room only. Last night was the first meeting of the Community Task Force on Terrorism. It was a wonderful turnout, we had 11 different committees that spoke. There was a lot of time spent, obviously, it was a lot of good productive conversation, there's gonna be follow-up meetings. And I know that I was tremendously impressed with the people that were here. The questions that came from the audience were excellent. The speakers, the committees were excellent. And I think it's an excellent way of, an opportunity for the community to express itself. And I think I have a vision of this as just being one part of an ongoing task force that can act as advisories to us for this is what we need for input as to the many questions that come up during the during the year that need to be addressed by the council and we certainly can use as many people as possible working on these different projects. No, I'm well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob, I'd like to thank you for setting up the memorial today for Mike Hogan and the planting of the tree in the park across the street. As we all know, Mike has done an awful lot for the city and will be
Yes, he did.
Definitely missed. That idea of putting the tree that he liked over in the park as a memorial was terrific idea, thank you for everything you did.
Thanks.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Just have one more.